Thank you. Next, disclosure of community interest. You can do so or at any point in time through the meeting. And next on, if I could have a motion for confirmation of the agenda. Moved by. You second by Rhonda. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. So consent agenda. We have items five point one to five point four. Do I have a motion? To give a thing over here with the motions? The exact wording?
No, it's just to receive the.
Okay, we're going to receive the conjecture consent agenda and approve the county council minutes of April second, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a move by Bob, second by Walter? Any discussion? Comment? Those in favor? That would be carried. Perfect. Next, we're going to go on to public meetings, hearings and delegations. We have none. So the next we'll go to seven point one. And that is the pandemic update.
Thank you. Through the warden, there is just an activity report or an information report regarding some of the activity taken since the the notice about the pandemic and council is aware of some of this information already, but I thought it might be nice just for some reference and then we will update you on a monthly basis in terms of what we're doing in continuation of service for the pandemic. So I didn't know if you have any questions, the report is before you.
Any questions on that report? Any comments? Oh, I got Todd up on the screen here now in a picture.
Oh, good.
Uh. Seeing none, I need a motion to receive that report. Moved by Todd, second by Doug. Those Doug, I sorry. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Next, seven point two, planning services.
Is Sally on there?
I don't see Sally on there. Or David Gundrum.
No Sally or David Gundrum? Okay, we'll have to.
Okay, can we go move on to, is it all right if we go to finance until we get them on the line? That work for everybody?
Corey, sir.
Corey, you're there?
I am here.
Okay, we're going to move to seven point three, finance, tax policy.
Thank you, Warden, Herson and council. This report is essentially the tax policy, tax rates and borrowing by law for two thousand and twenty. We do take our consideration in full CBA. We're out of capping as of two thousand and nineteen. What you'll see in there is the ratio percentages slightly shifted about one percent increase into the farmland. With residential paying about sixty percent of the burden overall. The tax rates itself is showing a one point seven three percent decrease from the two thousand and nineteen rates. But there's a sixteen point seven two percent decrease in the multi-res rate with in relation to trying to match it to one person, one which we fully phased in in two thousand and twenty one. And the second part of it is the borrowing by law where we can go out and borrow fifty percent of our revenues up until third quarter and then an additional twenty five for the final twenty five percent. This is being considered depending on how long the pandemic will go. In relation to that, we will can have access to about eight point two million dollars for the two thousand and twenty year. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
David's got one, we'll do him.
You?
Uh, yeah, is it possible we could, I know this is in the future next year, but if the impact is going to be phased in next year is going to be the same as this year, is there any possibility we could have an idea of how that'll affect our tax rates and our taxes for next year?
There has been an announcement actually from the province about holding off on the two thousand and twenty valuations. They're going to be based on two thousand and nineteen, so we could essentially do some scenarios on what the impact of that might be with some of the information within Opta that I can get later this year.
Okay, nope, that's fine.
Other questions? Comments? Not seeing any. Okay, I have some actions or recommendations here that, and I'll be a motion that Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty tax policy tax rates and borrowing part and that Perth County adopt the same tax ratios for two thousand and twenty as those of two thousand and nineteen for all respective classes except multi-residential and that two that Perth County Council approves the two thousand and twenty tax rates and temporary borrowing and the respective bylaws be presented for approval. Move by. Matt Duncan, second by. Don't everybody jump at once. Bob Willhahn. Any further discussion? Those in favor? That would be carried. Thank you. Okay, so that pretty well wraps up Corey. So I have David on the screen here now. So we're going to move back to planning services. And seven point two point one. And that is the application for county official plan amendment for the Donegal Mennonite Fellowship Church, OPA one eighty three. David?
Hey, thank you, Warden Herson. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, good.
I get into the script I have for this report, so it'll be a few minutes here and then I'd be happy to answer any questions thereafter. So Warden Herson, members of County Council. The applicants in this case, Donegal Mennonite Fellowship Church, on behalf of the owners of the subject property, Stephen Gerber and Sharon Gerber are seeking an official plan amendment to the county official plan for the purpose of creating a special policy area to allow for establishment of new open space recreational uses and stormwater management facilities on lands having an area of approximately one point three six hectares or three point three five acres, which are currently in the agriculture designation of the county OP. Subject lands are currently under cultivation and are proposed to remain within the agriculture designation of the county official plan should OPA one eighty three be approved. The official plan amendment proposes that the new uses are to be accessory to an existing institutional use being a private school which is located within the hamlet of Donegal, located at seven zero two one Perth Road one forty seven. The official plan amendment is also proposing to allow for future severance of the subject lands for the purpose of enlarging the abutting lot containing the existing private school located within Donegal. As per the provincial policy statement, section two, three, six, one B does permit planning authorities to offer non-agricultural uses in prime agricultural areas in the form of limited non-residential uses provided that the following four criteria are met under this section. Number one, the land does not comprise a specialty crop area. Number two, the proposed use complies with minimum distance separation formula. Number three, there is an identified need within the planning horizon for additional land to be designated to accommodate the use. And number four, alternative locations have been evaluated and it has been concluded that there are no reasonable alternative locations in prime agricultural areas and that there are no reasonable alternative locations in prime ag areas that have lower priority agricultural lands. As per the PPS criteria, the proposed changes under the official plan amendment are not to be found within a specialty crop area as per criteria one. For criteria two and three, the applicants have identified a demonstrated need for the proposed expansion of the school facilities at the existing location based on current and projected school enrollment. The applicants have also evaluated practicality of alternative locations as per schedule G to our report and have found that no reasonable alternative locations do exist in prime agricultural areas as well as no reasonable alternative locations having lower priority agricultural lands that have been able to be identified. And it's also noted that it'd be very difficult to find a site that is both representative of the school catchment area that would exist outside of a prime agricultural area given the character of the area. For council's information, a public meeting was previously held for this amendment on December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen in Listville. A copy of the public meeting minutes and the North Perth Council resolution from the public meeting on December sixteenth have been attached on pages forty two and forty three of the agenda. Following the outcome of this public meeting and the recommendation of North Perth Council to deny the application at the time the applicants requested additional time to revise aspects of their application, the county granted the request and received a revised site plan proposal on January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty. Given that the primary intent and purpose of the application remained unchanged in light of the revised site plan and that very limited public comments were received during the circuit, the previous circulation period. The planning office did not deem it necessary that we hold that we help hold the second public meeting, but rather that the application be brought back to local council to revisit its original recommendation. So at a meeting on March third, two thousand and twenty, council of municipality of North Perth recommended to county council that the application be approved as presented here today. Copy of the revised recommendation has been attached as schedule L on page forty four of the agenda. Primary effect, as I noted of the proposed amendment would be to allow for future severance of the subject lands having approximately one point three six hectares or three point three five acres of area found within the agriculture designation of the county official plan for the purpose of enlarging the existing school site to include new open space recreational uses and stormwater management facilities. In comparison to the original site plan that was presented, the area was reduced by approximately forty eight percent from the original application submission. As per schedule C on page twenty seven on the agenda, the proposed reduction has been achieved by rotating the proposed school expansion by ninety degrees as well as shifting other features such as the parking area and active play space further to the west towards Perth Road one forty seven. Of particular note to the additional changes that came about through the revision, a previous new primary public road access onto line seventy two has been removed and replaced with an emergency maintenance access to along with the reconfigured site plan which results in placement of two smaller baseball diamonds in place of the previous single larger diamond that was proposed through the first site plan. With regard to minimum distance separation, the county did our office did a more more thorough review of the MDS beyond what had been submitted by the applicants. And we we found that there would be no impacts on existing livestock facilities should the official plan amendment be approved. Lastly, as noted, the draft amendment contained on pages forty five and forty six of the agenda does propose that the area that would be designated as a special policy area should the amendment be approved would also be permitted to be severed for the purposes of enlarging the abutting property containing the existing school at seven zero two one Perth Road one forty seven. It should be noted that from a policy perspective, no new lot would be created should a severance be approved in this case. And that no removal of land from prime agricultural area is proposed to occur, nor would any adjustment to the existing Donegal settlement area occur. As per section two, three, four, two of the PPS, the PPS does state that lot adjustments in prime agricultural areas may be permitted for legal or technical reasons. Where legal or technical reasons is a term defined to mean severances for the purpose of easements, correction of deeds, court claims and minor boundary adjustments which do not result in creation of a new lot. While it is our opinion that the application as presented does not openly and directly violate the pertinent sections of the PPS, we have been made aware that should the application be approved, that the province may respond with respect to the matters surrounding the permissions granted through the OPA to allow for future severance to occur as proposed. If the official plan amendment is approved by county council, there would be a related application for zoning by law amendment made to municipality of North Perth as well as a consent to sever application made to the county at a later date. To conclude, we are recommending that county council receive our report for information and that they approve the application as presented and and that the respective bylaw as presented be adopted by council. I'd be, I know that was quite a long presentation here. I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Questions from council?
I have a question, Jim.
Yep, Doug.
I'm today, I I noticed in the OMAF for one, it said there could be a digester close. Well, of course, there's a digester close. How did we mitigate that? I know we treat the Mennonite community different. If this was somebody else, we wouldn't even consider this, but the Mennonite community is treated different. So how did you get that digester out of the scenario?
Thank you, councilor. Right. So about that digester, the digester as well as the other nearby livestock facilities, when we did a review of the MDS, we concluded that the projection that would be created through the special policy area, so it's projecting to the east. We ran calculations and determined that there there is, there's certainly enough room that they wouldn't be impacting, nor would they be impacted by any of those facilities. This is a private school within the Mennonite community. However, it is not a school which the students and it doesn't serve a community that relies on horse drawn transportation is what I'm trying to get at here. And and that's important because in the PPS and as well as in the MDS document, there are special considerations made and and reductions that can be discounted in the MDS for community for sites where the community relies on horse drawn transportation. That isn't the case here, councilor, right? So there are no special considerations that come to bear here. This is treated just like as if it was even a regular school, like a non-private school or or any other institutional site. There's no special considerations here because the the site is run by members of the Mennonite community as per any other special policy considerations. But to answer the the main question, the digester isn't of any consequence here based on the MDS analysis that we that we produced. Both it and the other livestock facilities are are far enough away that they're not, they will not be impacted by the proposed expansion, nor will they impact upon the proposed expansion proposed here.
Will will they hinder the guy with the pig farm there? In the future, not the dairy farm, the pig farm to the west. He has a barn way back at the back and he has a barn right at the front.
Correct. So when we ran our calculations, it was on the basis of the livestock primarily being situated in the building further to the back. On that basis, he would still have some ability to expand, but there there would be, he'd eventually hit a limit. But he, his facility is already impacted by the southeast projection, I would call it, of of the settlement area of Donegal. And that projection we found to be closer to that facility that he has towards the back of his farm than the proposed projection being that would extend to the east along line seventy two.
And the closest barn with the horses in on the Gerber farm, it doesn't count, right?
It doesn't count. It's it's already impacted by the northern boundary of Donegal. What the the new projection for the special policy area wouldn't have any effect because Gerber is is would would already would still be impacted as they are today. Should should that special policy area be created? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any change for their, from their perspective.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Comments? Not seeing any hands or hearing any voices. We have a recommended action. The county council receives the application for county official plan amendment by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of Donegal Mennonite Fellowship Church, OPA one eighty three. For information and then respect the by law presented for approval and that Perth County Council approve the application for official plan amendment by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of Donegal Mennonite Fellowship Church, OPA one eighty three for the property described as part lot thirty one concession nine Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth. Do I have a mover? I have Todd Casenberg and I have Matt Duncan. Any further questions or comments? Those in favor of that motion? That would be carried. Thank you. Next, we will move on to, thanks, David. We got Sally up.
Thank you, council.
Comprehensive review and policy directions. Sally?
Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Sounds like it.
Okay, great. All right. Good morning, Warden and council. This morning I'm reporting on the updated comprehensive review and the revisions to the policy directions report. Both of those documents were actually completed in two thousand and nineteen. And then later in that year, November, it was discussed at council that the comprehensive review needed more work, namely an extension of the projections to a twenty five year horizon rather than a twenty and then to reflect the recent increase in the growth rate in North Perth. So the original projections were based on Stats Canada research, which wouldn't have captured those numbers yet. And so Watson and Associates was commissioned to to rerun the projections and the calculations for land needs because of those two items and the the twenty five year horizon did come to fruition. It was changed from twenty by the provincial policy statement and that we got a new provincial policy statement in February of this year, two thousand and twenty, and it comes into effect May first. So making this change or commissioning this change back in December was definitely the right move because now this comprehensive review is going to be compliant with that new PPS as far as the the need to look at a twenty five year planning horizon. So I'm just going to briefly talk about the methodology a little bit and then the results and then what that means for our official plan. So I'm going to start with, it starts by looking at population growth and the job rates growth. And then it looks at the economic outlook for beyond our border and beyond the provincial border and and even globally and tries to if if figure out what the impact of that economic forecast has on both our population growth and our employment growth. So that piece of the of the work by Watson was also updated because a lot had, a lot had happened in the economy since they did this work originally like in two thousand and eighteen and reported it in two thousand and nineteen to us. So there were some changes that also impacted the the results of the comprehensive review that from an economic perspective. In our region, we're really heavily influenced by the GTA, of course, and the fact that that has on Kishner Waterloo and how that creates outward pressure to us here in Perth. So the they take that economic outlook and the population growth historically and the population growth that we've had recently and they then look at projecting that growth into the future and they do that for a twenty five year horizon. Then they use the that data to estimate the number of households that we're likely to see. They look at not only population growth, but the the trends in persons per household and the types of housing that we that we are going to be having are projected to have. So the number of households are estimated and then on the job side on the employment side of things, they look at what is the projected growth and because it's not directly linked to a building like housing, they look at, okay, what is the required area for the companies that are going to create those jobs? So it's it's more of a direct area of land calculation. Then they look at the types of housing based on the age cohorts and the current trends. And they create the projections for the types of densities that we're likely to see and the the types of densities that will be demanded in our community and created through the needs that we have. And then they calculate an area of land that we're going to need to have ready to support that growth. So we've gone from, what does the growth look like? Further giving characteristics to that growth and then estimating a number of acres that are needed for that growth to occur on. And then there they look at, okay, well, what land do we have currently available? So they do an inventory essentially and that inventory includes not only our service areas, but it does take into account infill and some intensification parameters. So they they inventory our land and they predict therefore the difference between how much we're going to need, how much we have already designated. And that that available land what we have is not just what's designated and undeveloped, but also what's designated and either has a draft plan approval or is registered and not yet developed. So it looks at all of the land that's available right now, either to build on or potentially to have a new subdivision created on it. And then it it does a calculation to to look at what the difference is between what we have available and what we need. And that shows you then the number of acres that you need to go ahead and designate to be prepared for the growth that we'll see over a twenty five period, twenty five year period. And that document with those calculations, projections and forecasts then becomes the justification piece that the municipality as the planning authority needs in order to justify their growth. And that requirement to justify comes straight out of the provincial policy statement. So what we can now do with our comprehensive review is to take that information and go and figure out where best to, where best are we going to locate this land that we need because we we'll see that the conference review does show that we need to allocate more land, we need to designate some more land to accommodate growth in both employment and in population and housing growth. So we're going now to take this data and match that with the work we've been doing on on our boundaries and figure out the best possible locations to put to put the new land. And then that will come through the draft, the new draft official plan that we'll be having later this year come forward and then we'll take that out for public consultation. So that's sort of the flow through of information and how or when rather, the opportunity for public consult is is offered on this growth. So what we learned from the comprehensive review is that the county is growing in both populations and jobs and we're not just growing, but we're growing at at that the rate of growth has also been increasing rapidly over the last few years since two thousand and sixteen and that we're likely to see that that sort of steep rate to continue to increase for a couple more years. And then it will start to taper off. So we'll still, it's, we're still projected to have growth over the whole twenty five years, but the rate that we're growing is going to remain high for the short term, taper off a little bit. And then towards the last ten to fifteen years of our twenty five year horizon, we'll see it leveling a little bit. And what that looks like in numbers really is that the population is expected to grow by roughly twelve thousand people with an overall growth rate over the twenty five years of point nine percent. And that is that's pretty significant, like that's a high rate of growth for a community. that's pretty significant. Like, that's a high rate of growth for a community, um, like Perth. Uh, if you looked, i- if you, um, tagged one of the pages in the conference review, um, it's page, uh, three dash two, and it, it compares that rate to other communities. And we're right up there with, um, we're just behind some of the urban centers like Waterloo and Kitchener. And we're almost, um, we're almost, uh, like tenfold some other rural communities. So that's a, that's a significant rate of growth. Um, what that has translated into when we look at the types of peep, uh, the types of, uh, age cohorts and the types of housing that we're gonna need, um, that looks like around, uh, a sh- a slight shift in our densities of housing uh, towards about fifty-nine percent, uh, low density, twenty-six percent medium and fifteen percent high density. So those are increases in both medium and high density, which helps us, um, navigate, uh, the types of housing that we're likely to be demanded and it helps us create policy that in our official plan in the text that supports, um, us in, in requesting those kinds of densities from developers. Um, and then on the, uh, yeah, so for housing in particular, um, the majority of growth is expected to happen in North Perth. And, um, that's just around thirty-eight hundred units. Um, of the roughly, uh, fifty-two hundred that are proposed, um, to be needed in our community over the twenty-five hu- twenty-five years. Um, on the employment side, we're looking at roughly seventy-three hundred jobs. That's a rate of growth of one point one percent. That's also a, a decent, not decent growth rate. Um, unlike, um, there is gonna be growth across, uh, most of the employment sectors. Um, mostly the, the fastest growing one really is gonna be like retail and service jobs that sort of are required by the, by the new population. Um, and then um, the other one, the, the fastest growing one, although it's a small chunk of employment, the fastest growing sectors are the work-at-home sectors and the no-fixed a- address sectors, which is, an example of which is like trucking. Um, so that sort of talks about the growth in employment and housing. And then if we shift into what that means in terms of the land base that's needed for that growth, um, uh, we, more houses and more jobs, um, we are gonna determine, um, or have been determined that that's what's going to happen. Um, what's available now is in West Perth and Perth South, they have, um, they have sufficient land designated to accommodate, um, the overall growth. And, um, that is largely like in serviced areas. So Mitchell, um, Shakespeare being partially serviced. And to some degree in Sebringville, um, although it's not serviced, there is an established settlement area there, um, uh, which has been identified for some growth. So those areas have enough land that it designated now to accommodate the growth that's projected. Um, but looking at North Perth, um, specifically, um, there, uh, there is a sufficient supply in Atwood. So we're looking at the two serviced areas, Atwood and Listowel. Um, it's projected that Atwood has, um, uh, quite, quite a surplus actually of land. It is all located in one subdivision basically. Um, and just remembering that available land for growth is, is also includes the designated, um, the draft approved, which that subdivision is, and registered lands. So it's included in what's available and it has, uh, demonstrated a sufficient supply and a surplus for Atwood. Um, in Listowel, it's quite different. We've already used up most of the growth areas there. Um, there, uh, if you consider the draft approved and the registered plans of subdivision, um, as being available, we s- it still looks like, uh, a need there for about fifteen hundred of the thirty-eight hundred, uh, houses or housing units rather needed um, for Listowel. And so there's a projection there that we need to designate another ninety-eight hectares. And, uh, the other area where a deficiency is noted is Milverton, um, being short, um, in the neighborhood of two hundred units or two hundred and seven units and that equating to about thirteen hectares needing to be designated. So that's on the housing side. On the employment side, um, there's, uh, a deficiency overall in the county of about twenty-four hectares. Um, but when you break it down by municipality, there's actually, um, surplus in Perth South, um, giving us that twenty-four when it looks like individually in Listowel, we're short, um, about thirty-six hectares for employment growth. Um, seven hectares in West Perth and two hectares in Perth East. And I would, I would note that, um, because Listowel is so filled up already, um, that in Listowel, we're talking about basically straight-up expansion. And then the other communities, um, with respect to employment at least, we're probably looking more at, um, adjustments to accommodate that growth rather than, um, straight-up e- expansions. Um, an adjustment being, um, shifting land from one designation to another. Um, and so, uh, that's, that's the gist of the numbers. Um, my comments in my report are, okay, what do we do with this and what's important, um, at the end of the day? Um, aside from the work that we need to do to get our official plan to reflect this, uh, study is that, um, it demonstrates such real need that we need to track the growth and that we need to be revising our comprehensive review if we see different trends than what's been projected. So i- it's, it's really important, um, going forward that we, that we have a mechanism for tracking in the county and that we're keeping on top of it. Um, again, that the location of some of this growth is, uh, yet to be nailed down and that's gonna come through the work on our official plan this spring and summer. Um, and that adjustments, um, uh, ju- there's been a lot of adjustments or boundary adjustments requested, um, by individual people and that those are still being considered as part of the official plan work, but they're not reflected necessarily directly in the comprehensive review project. Um, so just to note that those are still very much being evaluated and not directly reflected here. Um, I think I mentioned in passing, but just wanted to highlight there is a need for policy support in our official plan to support, um, the density targets and intensification, um, in our sets of, or serviced, uh, serviced settlement areas. And so that's the type of policy in the, that you're gonna see in the text in, in, um, the urban areas. And, um, a final note that the comprehensive review are predictions and they're predictions based on some really intelligent, um, evaluations and, um, examinations of data and trends. And, um, it's important that as it unfolds, that we look at localized deviations from it because what happens in reality might not exactly reflect this. Um, but, but this is really good, uh, fodder for our planning. And the, the onus is on us then to look at localized deviations and to reflect back on the overall picture and see if the deviation is something we need to adjust for or if it's something that will get worked out over time as, as this projection unfolds. Um, and then to be looking at the data overall, doing the tracking and making sure that we're keeping keeping track of our land availability over time and not just writing this out for twenty-five years. That, that's a misuse of the document. So I just wanted to, um, bring those pieces forward. Um, the policy directions report, um, was amended also or revised, and that's a direct, um, relationship to the updates in the comprehensive review. So the policy directions report by W S P tells us all the different pieces of policy that we need to update, like the gaps between current provincial policy and what we have in our O P. And there is a section in there specifically relating to the Watson report, so they had to update that section. And then there's a section following that, section five on growth management. So both of those sections needed to be revised to reflect the new calculations. And that's why it is also before you in my recommendation that both, um, both documents get adopted by county council and that we move forward in using them in our official plan and that, um, the comprehensive review, um, be put up on our website and made available to the public through our, um, through our townships and, uh, lower tiers as well. So any questions, I'm happy to take.
Comments? Uh, Rhonda?
Well, I have quite a few comments I wish to make. Um, so first thing is a steering committee and according to this report is the C A Os and the steering committee is supposed to be the mayors as well because it was a resolution put through last November that the mayors were to be part of that and that this report does not reflect that.
Uh, do you want me to address them as you go?
Uh, we, um, okay, on that point there, that is true, that that can be adjusted.
Yeah, that was an oversight on my part to relay that to Watson.
Okay, uh, Rhonda, you had more points?
Yep. Um, so if you go to page, uh, excuse me, fifty-two, uh, before you get into the actual report, it, uh, it talks about the housing and the, how it can accommodate for the next twenty-two years existing settlements. Municipality but Perth South. So I'm gonna stand up for Bob here in his group. You know, they need to be included. Biggest problem I see with what's going forward right now is they're looking at Perth County as a whole, and that's great, but we're all individual municipalities. We all have different needs. We, and right now, I don't think the local municipalities and the planners have had a whole lot to say. I haven't. And I think we need more say and what's going on around some of our villages and how the land's gonna be designated and what we want it designated for. So before we get too far, that W S P is just going to make Milverton, Listowel and Mitchell the main center and nothing else. I want someone to sit down with the local municipalities, with our local planners and go over what we think should be going on around our little village. Because I know we have some land designated in Perth East around Brunner that'll probably never, ever, ever residential like it's zoned. But there's still the possibility someday that it might be some houses there. So I, and I've been on council for twenty years and our subdivisions have sat dormant in Milverton for twenty years. They're finally getting going. Now you're telling me we need a whole lot more land there. I'm not willing to designate land there that's gonna sit dormant again for twenty-five years. And our other villages can't do anything. So there has to be more input from local councils, managers, planners. This to me isn't there.
Sally, you know, respond to that?
For sure. So the first thing I wanna, um, respond to is, um, the sort of the sit-down and the evaluation of what land is designated now and how, like, how it's, how it's brought into the conversation. So right now, um, G I S, um, staff and myself and your, and your local planners, we're all looking at, um, maps um, and looking at the land that's designated and undeveloped. And we're looking at, um, what constraints they may have. And we're also looking at, um, we're also mapping out all the existing servicing so that we can really sit down and go settlement area by settlement area and say, like, does this make sense to be designated or not? And if not, then it, it can go on a list of like a designation change for the O P. And we're gonna go through that piece by piece. And so I'm proposing to do that, um, I've been doing it like, uh, on and off with, with your planners. But at the end of the day, we need to bring the results of those sort of constraints and, uh, planning discussions, servicing discussions back to the steering committee and say, here's what we gleaned from that data. Um, this is what it looks like and then get your input. So there is gonna be stages of conversations that get us through that part of looking at all these boundaries and the, and looking at the properties that are yet designated but haven't had growth or designated and could have growth and really go through the inventory. So that work is coming. Um, and it's gonna come through our planning, our team of planners in Perth County, up and up to the steering committee. And so that was sort of one part of your question. The other part was, um, how Watson has, um, decided, if you will, where the growth will happen. And it's not so much that they made a decision, it's that, um, they know that the provincial policy statement requires, um, that our growth be matched to places where servicing is planned. And so the decision, the decision actually about where growth can occur happens when municipalities decide what they're gonna service. Um, and so those, i- if you wanna refer to it as a decision, like the decisions are made um, based on servicing. So there is places that are unserviced, um, that have some growth potential still. Um, and and we have, or Watson has looked at those areas and said, okay, the growth that's expected in this township, because they did look at it sort of by lower tier, all each four, each of the four, and said, okay, here's the areas that have some growth still. We're not necessarily gonna take that away. We're gonna account for it in our growth um, and our land inventory and our land needs. So they're saying there's pieces of land in villages and in hamlets and some of the unserved areas that is available for growth and should be used. Um, but they're also saying that if we're gonna, um, expand the settlement area and encourage more growth there, that we're obligated to use the areas that are serviced.
But some of our areas are, are so large geographically that we have serviced areas, but it doesn't always make sense for the whole municipality. So three of my predecessors all said everybody should retire in Milverton. None of them three did. So, you know, it, it's, uh, it's not, it's not do as I do, it's do as I say. So I have a pro- I have a problem with you designate in one area. I really think it shouldn't be the steering committee that has this final say. It should be the councils that have the say, not the C A Os and the, and the mayors. It should be all of council that each municipality has their own say in what's going on. So maybe the chart says steering committee, but I don't believe it should be the steering committee.
Do you have any other points, Rhonda?
Um, the other thing is the natural heritage. We've discussed this too, and I don't want it getting just evolve, and I don't know where it's at, but we also talked about, um, talking to the landowners that um, letting them know there's gonna be designations changed on their properties. And I'm just kinda wondering where that's at. Is that still happening? Or what's happening with that?
Okay, so natural heritage, um, is still being evaluated. Um, I've had a lot of recent discussions about it in the last three weeks, actually, about how to, so one of the directions from council to, to me back in November was take our study and try to figure out how to use the information in there to make good policy for our community. And try to figure out, um, how to use the mapping or update our existing mapping, um, to reflect the actual uh, natural heritage features on the ground. Because our current official plan mapping is, is outdated, just like the text is. So I've been having a lot of conversations about the mapping and how to, um, how, how it should be used. And, um, I had a lengthy, uh, consult with hearing county staff and how they use their data eventually. And they did take that mapping through a number of processes and steps and public consultation. And so I'm contemplating how their experience can, can influence our experience here and how we, how we go forward. Um, I'm not convinced that, um, I'm not convinced that it, that we're ready to bring the mapping back to landowners and say, okay, this is what it says for your property. Um, I think actually the data needs to, the mapping needs a little bit more um, finesse, if you will. Um, I wanna look at it a little more closely. I wanna go through, um, the properties myself and as the, the natural heritage features myself. Um, and look at what's actually on the ground and what's been proposed to be mapped. And I wanna look at how that differs. And I want to look at how that differs from what's currently designated in a natural here, in our natural heritage, natural environment layer. And I know that was done to a large degree by, um, and you guys all probably saw that before I even came on the scene. But that was done on like the whole county. I actually want to zoom in and look at properties and figure out, um, if there's patterns. Um, if there's patterns of what's different between what we have designated now and what's being proposed, um, to be designated. Because I don't think it's fair to go to landowners, um, and say, this is just, uh, this is the new mapping. This is the way it is. I think we need to investigate more clearly and be able to speak more fluently about what the difference is on the ground in our map. And I'm not, I'm not ready. That's not, that work isn't done. So it's happening, um, it's happening in concert with your official plan. I'm a little concerned that, um, that work can't all happen this year, all the natural heritage mapping work. Um, and so I'm trying to think of whether or not we can, um, we have justification to, um, work with our current map to improve our policy. Cause we have serious text or significant text, um, improvements to make in the natural heritage side of things as well. So I'm contemplating if we can wrap the OP with, um, and then make this natural heritage mapping part our next big project. And I'm trying to nail that down so I can bring that back to you. But, um, if I can impress anything upon you, it's that the natural heritage is pretty forefront in my workload as is the official plan.
Okay, and I, I appreciate those comments. Like, sounds like you have a good handle on it. And I, it is, sounds like a huge undertaking.
It is.
As long as we get it, we all get it right before it, it goes through it. You know, I appreciate your comments and, and I understand, you know, that you are on top of it. So that's good.
Okay, I have Daryl, then I have Todd, and then I have Bob. But Daryl first.
How are they? Great. You can hear me, Sally?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks there. Um, the hereon process there, the way they went about handling it, there is a lot of mixed feelings. Some feel that a few of their central were a little jammed through and quite frankly, I have to agree. So yeah, I like what you said there, Sally. We, we got to do some hunting and some looking before we take it to the public. And we need to be prepared. Uh, significant valleys again, I, I sound like a broken record, but that is huge. It's a little gray in the PPS and what it's brought to us. It is a little gray as well because they say it's all significant, but yet it's clearly divided with roads. And the fact that in other equal regions, um, they mark a very significant valley lands. Don't matter all of us down here. It, it's really complex and it's not nice actually. It's, but we need to get this right and appreciate that you're slowing the natural heritage portion down. It's good. And now I'm going to bounce quick. The, the official plan portion, I have to agree and echo with Rhonda. I have some notes here next to us. Up in Milverton, for instance, we had twenty-five, thirty years. We're sitting on lots. There's a lot there again. Um, a condone prone here. We might as well accept the fact that there's going to be some hiccups and re-ironing of society and world. This isn't done. Um, there's people getting pulled over. They're not coming back to work. We don't know, and these are the uncontrollable realities. Up there, for example, as well, they are full in their public school or public schools, hopefully slam all this, I keep growing up there. Then I look at Shakespeare where there is very good neighboring farms that you can never plant stock, livestock on. Easily handle some development and it's not in there. And it's just, it's wrong. At the end of the day, our money keeps siphoning up that way and we can barely get a sidewalk fixed. It just, I have to not agree with the way this is being handled. Uh, just the process they're using, I'm not horribly in favor of. And, and we need to get the lower levels a little more involved to get this ironed correctly. We really do it. We're self in particular. There's more that could be on there. We, quite frank, we need to get this, um, for North Perth County. Yes, there is lots, but there is some. Could handle a little bit of residential and then them people could go in to Stratford, St. Mary's and it would really help. I just, there's little ways to go yet, I believe.
Okay, Sally, any response to that? Or that's just general comments by Daryl?
I think, I think it reflects what Rhonda's saying. I'm trying to capture it. Um, you were a little bit hard to hear, Daryl, but I think I, I think I got the gist of it. And what I'm hearing is that, um, you want more discussion about some of the smaller settlement areas. And how they, um, how they're, how are they intended to grow and prosper in our, in light of this document and how it informs our official plan.
Right. Yeah, just finish up. Yeah, Sally, you're absolutely right. We got some loadings just on our public schools from the school board. And we can see what's there and we're running, I think, around sixty-five, seventy percent, I believe, around down in Shakespeare here. We can handle more and looking up, it's going to be around there, but we could handle some more. And we have the school there as opposed to up there and we're into this big predicament of siphoning more and more tax increase. For an area that's pretty plugged up already where we could build down in the lower portion. And it's only because facilities are there. So I'm concerned we need a little more involvement. It's very important. Thank you.
Okay, Todd, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I think there's, uh, no doubt that there's a desire, uh, on the part of North Perth as well. That North Perth Council have opportunity to, uh, review any propositions with regards to, uh, lands that might need to be allocated uh, to either residential or future commercial, uh, uh, expansions. Um, obviously we'll be interested in, in boundary adjustments in Listowel. I think that's, um, a, a self-evident point, given the numbers that we've seen report. Um, generally with regards to the report, found this, uh, report and that particularly the numbers, uh, more acceptable than previous, um, indications that we've seen with regards to for future growth. Um, having said that, um, I did take note of the, the curious, um, math around, uh, Atwood having a surplus of a hundred and sixty units or so. Um, and, uh, in, I just want to reiterate that, um, Atwood from our perspective is a growth area. Uh, we believe that some of the deficit that's seen in Listowel will actually be absorbed by, uh, the planned developments in Atwood. And so, uh, in fact, probably the Listowel number is what gets adjusted in a downward direction in response to Atwood. And, um, and certainly there is, um, you know, increased interest in bringing full services to all of the, the boundary of Atwood, um, in the plan. Uh, but generally I think with regards to one of your comments, Sally, um, I think there is a really important link here. And that is that there was a, um, growth plan developed by North Perth, I believe around two thousand fourteen. Um, it was released in a series of efforts, uh, from the county. And, uh, it's strangely, uh, the case that that growth plan, especially for Listowel, um, was to be a ten-year window and yet here we are at year five and we've blown past, uh, that growth plan largely. So, um, your first comment about the importance of review of the assumptions and, uh, periodic adjustments over the twenty-five year window, I think is really prudent. In fact, um, the notion that, uh, we look at this every five years. In the case of Listowel, we may even need to look at this, uh, more frequently in a three-year planning window. But given the, the fact that Listowel has repeatedly, um, exceeded growth projections from conservative models. So I think, um, you know, I, I heartily endorse that piece. But I will chime in with my colleagues from Perth East and indicate that I believe that, uh, our local council will want to be an integral part of the discussions pertaining to how and where growth happens. And, um, and I, I suppose in North Perth, in some ways we have less concern about smaller hamlets. Um, because there aren't a lot of them with designated growth space, spaces, but we can appreciate how it is that our colleagues are interested in that and, and would lend our voice to that, uh, in context. Those are my comments.
Okay, just before Sally responds, Bob, can I get you to turn your mic off for a second? Uh, I'm getting a bunch of kickback here all of a sudden. Thank you. Uh, Sally? Comments to Todd?
Yeah, um, just reviewing my notes. Again, um, hearing that look, I'm just trying to think through as you guys are talking about how, um, like what the mechanics are of having the councils like get in on the discussion around where the growth happens and how, um, how that's planned and how boundaries are adjusted. So tho- those, um, that's sort of rolling around in my head, um, as, as I, I'm hearing it from all, from everyone who's spoken so far. Um, yeah, the, this, uh, this new document definitely reflects, um, I think the previous one, because it didn't have the recent data around the, the rapid growth from two thousand sixteen till, till now. Um, and now this new document does. This is a, whether we talk about, uh, where this happens or not, I think the overall growth projections are more, much more realistic about, uh, our point nine growth rate. That's a way more realistic number. And that has come about, um, Watson would tell you, um, not only by the different sort of economic picture that, that they were able to draw from, um, through the two thousand nineteen year, but also, um, the building permit data that they were able to review. And then thirdly, um, they just were, they just took, took a more, they, they like to refer to it as a bullish approach. So, um, a little more aggressive on their, um, on their analysis in terms of what, like they kind of went to the boundary of what they, they're comfortable with and saying, how much growth could we really see? So that has reduced, that has brought us much more, as you say, acceptable, um, numbers of the overall growth in the county. Um, you talk about, um, Atwood being, um, the, the calculation there being a bit curious. And, um, I guess, I, I think, but I'm not certain, but I think it's, it's because, um, all of, it's the, it's skewed because all of the growth or all of the potential for growth is on one subdivision. And it doesn't feel right because, um, if Atwood's not allowed to grow and we're reliant on this one subdivision, then how does that compute? And, um, I, I have a few thoughts on that. And one of them is that, um, that if you look just at the numbers, um, that subdivision does accommodate growth in Atwood for a long period of time, much longer than twenty-five years. But the comment that you make about Listowel and the, um, and the, and the impact that it might have on Atwood, I think is very true. And it's going to be something that we have to look and monitor as it happens. Because what I kind of think is possible is that because we have a huge lag, if you will, of lots available in Listowel right now. Um, so the demand for lots is high. There's a very, there's almost none available. Um, they're already bought. Um, they're being built on. And that is a lag that was created some time ago when there wasn't new land designated. So the number of applications for subdivisions has slowed. And that's in direct contrast to the demand and the rate of growth. So what we have right now is a lag. Um, we have a deficient amount of lots also in Listowel. And so I think what we're going to see possibly then is that because there's lots available, potentially available in Atwood, that Atwood will see more of the growth than this document projects. Um, and then once Listowel has land designated and sort of catches up with itself in terms of the demand for lots, then, um, the time that that might take may mean that Atwood gets used up. And so this document is a very like, it's more of a clean picture of anticipated growth. It doesn't dig down into the weeds on the availability, availability of lots in two thousand twenty because of this deficiency in, in the designated land that's available. So I think we'll see a shift and Atwood will end up growing faster because of that sort of reality on the ground. It's one of the things that I'm talking about when I'm talking about like a localized deviation from what this document is showing us. And then we have to, um, be tracking that. We have to be looking at it as it's unfolding. And we have to be willing to sort of evaluate at least whether we do need to shift, um, shift, um, away a little bit from what the document is telling us in terms of where to put growth or, um, how much growth is anticipated for Listowel versus Atwood versus Milverton, um, for example. But, um, we also have to be able to look at the fine details when those kinds of shifts happen. And then view them in this larger picture of, okay, is this shift, um, has that now compromised, say, Atwood's available land? Or do we still have like a twenty-five year supply or a three-year supply of lots? And, uh, step back into the big picture, evaluate it and then make changes that, that the real unfolding of this is telling us. So that's kind of how I see, uh, this curiosity around Atwood, um, being reported and then potentially unfolding. And I don't know if that's what you were asking, but that's what your question made me think of.
Todd? Yeah, I agree, Sally. I think that, that, you know, when you talk about that localized adjustment, I think that some of the we're seeing in the Listowel market with the demand continuing, uh, will drive the rapid, actually, I think rapid development of the new Dommage subdivision in the context of this. And, and some of those homes that are projected to be needed in Listowel will actually wind up in Atwood as a consequence.
Yep, that's my, that's what I think will happen.
Councillor Wilhelm, you had your hand up before.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to thank, uh, Rhonda for, for defending Perth South. And, uh, I, I, uh, disappointed that, uh, Perth South doesn't have any residential growth. As Sally's aware, um, hopefully there's a project going forward in Silveringville. I'm always optimistic, even though it's a big F. And, uh, with us surrounding St. Mary's and bordering on Stratford, uh, they have tremendous residential growth in both those, uh, city and town. And I would expect that if this residential, um, and development goes forward in Silveringville, we will take on, uh, quite a few of those, uh, potential, uh, builds. And, uh, down the road, uh, we would be out of, uh, land with, with no place to go for development. And, uh, I'm pleased to hear Sally wanting to take a closer look at, uh, the individual areas because the last thing we need to do is get an official plan. And then in ten years, we start doing, uh, official plan amendments. And so we need to, as, as it's been indicated, we all have to be involved, I think, and ensure that, uh, we cover everything and, uh, we make this, uh, a good document that's going to last for a number of years without continuing to amend it.
Um, yeah, um, one thing that you said piqued my, um, piqued my interest and that was that, um, that some of the areas, well, you see, bring Villa as an example, um, isn't being allocated any, any growth. And I think, um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to say that this document is, is actually telling us that everywhere in Perth is actually going to grow. And, um, it's not saying that those areas aren't growing. It's saying the opposite. It's saying everywhere is growing. What it is saying is that some of those areas have a twenty-five year supply. And so they don't need the boundary to expand right now. need the boundary to expand right now. But in reflecting on that point, if we are successful in Sebringville and that does get filled up, and they don't, they no longer have a 25-year supply, then we can go back to this document and actually use it as justification to say, okay, well, we don't have a 25-year supply anymore because this document told us that we would have this much growth and we had much more in that area. So it gives us an opportunity to go back and say, okay, we used up the 25-year supply in Sebringville, for example, and does this document now give us justification to actually grow that boundary? And I think that if we do exceed that kind of growth where the, some of these other places have demand and they're exceeding the projection for 25 years, then that's part of the tracking I'm talking about where we go back and we say, okay, well, the reality on the ground was slightly different than this, but this document does give us a baseline to now grow something. It's the, it tells us what our rates of growth are, and it tells us what our land supply is. And so in, in a, in one way, it's actually gonna, we're gonna be able to rely on it to show that those areas actually need to grow more if what we actually see on the ground is that they get used up. So it's important that we recognize that all of the settlement areas are expected to grow, and this document tells us that, but that the 25-year supply according to this is sufficient in most areas. It's there, it's on the ground. And when we get into our conversations about boundary adjustments, we'll look at, okay, well, it says there's 15 acres here, but is there really 15 acres here? So that's our job is to go back and say, okay, this document tells us we need 15 acres. Do we really have it, or is the piece of property that's designated really more like a, like a 12-acre piece or a 10-acre piece? And so those are the boundary adjustment conversations that we're gearing up to have with you.
You good at that, Bob?
Yep.
Okay, other questions? Comments? Well, I think that's been a good discussion. The one thing Sally, I'd like to see is addressed sooner than later, is that you mentioned about the density. Uh, my personal belief is we have to get far more denser. We just can't keep building estate lots, and that seems to be the way we've gone the last number of years, but not only within county areas, but also within city areas as well. We just can't keep building one-acre estate lots, like that's just not feasible into the future. That's just my only thought.
Okay, the way that we intend to address that is that the official, the new official plan would have policies, not just saying this, that our target is these densities, the 59, the, oh, the numbers escape me right now, but I think it was 15% high density and, and a reduction of like the low density down to something in the neighborhood of 60%. So our official plan right now doesn't have strong targets, but not only does it not have strong targets, it doesn't have like a mechanism to say when a subdivision comes in, hey, you didn't hit the target. It also needs to say, you need to hit the target. Like you, you have to go back and come and rejig that so that it's denser. And we don't have those policies right now, and that's what we're trying to, to achieve in the new official plan.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've had a good discussion on that. Nobody else has any more questions? I've got a motion here that the county council received a report entitled Revised Comprehensive Review and Revised Policy Direction Report, that county council adopt both documents and direct they be used to guide and direct the development of the new Perth County Official Plan currently in progress, and that county council direct that both documents be circulated to the clerks of the local municipalities and be made available to the public upon request as well as via the County of Perth website. Do I have a mover? Todd Kastenberg, second by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? Great. Perfect, thank you very much. That was a good discussion, because it is a fairly important part of what's going to happen here going forward. Okay, next, we're going to move on to Public Works, and I'm just going to give you a little preamble before we get going here. I see I've got John back up on the screen, and I don't intend to throw anybody under the bus, John, just don't take this the wrong way. So I did mention a while back that I'd like to see St. Andrew Street reviewed as far as potential surplus. So there had been reports over the last number of years as to what the possibilities were. John has done the, the homework and dug some of those up and some of the recommendations from before that were sort of stalled out and not done anything with. We have four members of council on here, I'm thinking that have never seen any of this before. So this is basically to start a discussion on your potential campus solution. I don't expect maybe a decision made today, I think we need a little bit more information. We're probably going to have to go back and get a little more information before you can make, well, not a little more, maybe a lot more in some cases, before we can actually make a decision, but I did want to get the discussion started. So that's kind of the preamble. The other thing I'm going to say before we start is COVID-19 has got us onto a whole new train of thought, and I'm seeing it here this morning on the screen. We've always thought we needed space to put bodies in. If we have the right staff, we may not necessarily need that space, or we could take the space we have and redesign it with smaller desks and a whole lot of things, and Lori and I have talked about that at length the last two, three days and even two, three weeks off and on. So I'm going to have John give his report, and then I want this to open up for discussion. If there's something in there that everybody says like, that's not a prayer's chance in China we're going to do that, then it's gone. But I want, I want to narrow the focus down as to what county council is thinking. John, take it away.
Thank you, Warden, nature's in, good morning, council. Hopefully you can hear me all right, and I appreciate the Warden speaking on behalf of this report before I, I have a shot at it. But there is a couple of things I'd like to advise you of before I get into my reports. First off, just, we've had to respond to a few winter events over the last week. Responses were on Good Friday, Tuesday morning in the north, and of course, this morning in the north and the west part of the counties. We do have a postseason protocol in place that deals with these types of events, but just so that you are aware, that response is not at the same level as during our typical winter season. In other words, it takes us a little longer to get over some of those roads that require attention, and that was the case this morning, certainly when I was coming into work, so. Secondly, next meeting, I'm going to be bringing back a number of reports on tender results of our capital projects. And if you're like me before, that might change when I bring back some of these results and prices. What we're seeing is some increases, and in some cases, some major increases in construction materials across the board. So what I'm trying to do is just give you a heads up so you're not too shocked that when I bring back these results. And just so that you understand, I continue to work and discuss with our contractors and our municipal partners how we might mitigate some of those increases in our projects and, and certainly provide some options to council on how we might mitigate some of that moving forward. On that note, I think we'll, we'll move into the first report, which is the 24 St. Andrew Street Facility, and I appreciate Warden Herson's comments beforehand, and yes, it's, when I started writing this report, this is more for information and to get discussion going on this topic, but in bringing this 24 St. Andrew topic to you, I'd be remiss if we not bring to you information on the whole courthouse campus, because this is a complex and, and it's not an easy project or an easy discussion to have, but it's been going on for years, and I, I know there is at least one councillor who's been around for a while, who's, who's seen the various iterations of, of campus reports and campus designs, and certainly, back in 2009, there was a more extensive study done and some, a number of plans and ideas brought forward. However, since then, a lot of, that's not necessarily relevant today. Back in 2009, we were looking at renovating 24 St. Andrews to include archives. We were looking at renovating five Huron at the same time to, you know, to move planning in there or, or other departments and even bring in paramedic services admin. So since 2009, we've obviously made some decisions that, that make those plans irrelevant today by building a new archives, by the museum, by building a new paramedic services headquarters, which now houses their admin. So certainly, there, there's a lot of things that we've looked at over the past, and to say that myself or any staff at the county are subject matter experts in some of this stuff is probably far from it, but I think at the very least, we can bring you some good ballpark figures, some good options forward that can certainly steer us in the right direction and allow you to make some good decisions. And I think that's been a problem in the past, along the, along the way, maybe there's been a couple of decisions made that, you know, maybe impacts what we're going to try and do today. So at the same time, one thing I have seen over this last year and certainly during this budget process is council's commitment to moving the matter forward, capital projects forward, and also of late, you've, you've been very vocal in about the security, the accessibility, and what we're doing central administration within the courthouse facility. So again, this, this report is just to start that discussion, and we'll, we'll get into it here. So there was a number of reports in the past that were written for 24 St. Andrew Street, that was back in 2017, 2016, 2017, and the, the first one was looking at whether we could demolish the building. And so first and foremost, council has the option, and it's council, county council's decision as to whether they declare this building surplus to the county's needs. So you can do that with a resolution in an open council meeting. Nothing's stopping you from, from doing that, but why would you want to do that? Either you want to declare this surplus to our needs because A, you know, you'd want to look at demolishing the building, or B, perhaps severing off the building and, and selling it. So to the point of declaring things surplus, we've done so in the past, over the last couple of years, we've declared several lands surplus and are moving forward with the sale of those, of those lands. In this case, back in 2017, we reached out to the city of Stratford and, and inquired as to the feasibility of demolishing the building, and I think the response back basically indicates to demolish this building is, is probably slim to none. You're going to require approval and permission by the city of Stratford, the Heritage Committee. So I think, and I think one thing to be very clear and for everyone to understand, the registry building, 24 St. Andrew Street, and the courthouse are not heritage designated. However, they do lie within the heritage district of the city of Stratford and are subject to the Heritage Committee in, in Stratford. So anything that we, and basically that affects anything that we would like to do on the outside of the building. It doesn't so much affect what we want to do on the inside of these buildings, but certainly on, on the, on the outside. So indications back, to demolish the building, that would not likely be an option for us moving forward. So the next thing we took a look at is declaring it surplus and potentially severing that building off for a potential sale. And, and I think again, we reached out to the city of Stratford Planning Department, and the comments have been provided in this report, and it's basically indicating that yes, you could sever it off there, and you could potentially sell this property. There would be zoning implications for the buyer there, and it's not, again, the Heritage Committee would be involved, and you would need certainly some things to go through the city of Stratford in order to, to accomplish that, that severance. So in, in that ca, in that case, declaring this building surplus and moving forward to sell it, that is feasible. And, and so the next thing we took a look at within that is, is just, if you were to do that, then, then you'd have to follow our disposal of surplus property policy. So I've outlined some of that information here in, in this report, and you would have to follow that if, if it was declared surplus and you're looking to sell it. Another item with this is if you're looking to sever the building of the lot, there is an accessible ramp in front of 24 St. Andrew Street, and that ramp is accessed off the sidewalk entrance to the courthouse as well. There are, are all separate utility feeds into the building for gas, hydro, and water services. However, sanitary services connect with other sanitary pipes on our property and feed into the campus parking lot area. That's very similar to the jail property or building that sits on, on the campus as well. However, telephone and IT services to 24 St. Andrew are currently connected via the courthouse. In 2017, we also reached out to a local real estate broker just to inquire about potentially selling the building. They kind of looked at it through an income approach and thought the building would be worth, based on that approach, about $260,000 to $290,000. However, they did acknowledge that that approach may not be ideal for that type of building. There would certainly be some emotional appeal to, to some buyers which could drive that price up. Over the years, we do have a few issues with the building. There is asbestos in, in the building, and there's also a presence of mold primarily in the basement level. That building's only accessed at this point in time by facility staff or any maintenance contractors that may need to fix something in there. Currently, we only have surplus furniture stored in there, and that is on the main level of the building. Back in 2018, we did a facility condition assessment, and with this particular building, we, we didn't really ask for them to sort of go through the components of the building and, and give us an idea of what we would require as far as capital maintenance on an annual basis moving, moving forward. This building is at a stage and at a deterioration point, and given all the issues that we have with it, the consultant for the facility condition assessment basically said that it, it needs to be totally gutted, refinished, and repurposed. At that time, they gave an approximate cost for remediation of about $870,000, and just said the building is generally in very poor condition. I did reach out to that consultant recently just to try and, and to find out if that, if that cost is still reasonable and if it might include a elevator. If that cost is still reasonable and if it might include a elevator, um, in, in that, so. Um, I don't have a, I don't have an exact answer back, however, I, I do know that, uh. Um, that eight hundred and seventy thousand is based on a very high end square, uh. Reconstruction rate of, of about two hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot. And I think back then they also indicated they might be a little late on that number. We're probably looking here in the, in the area of about a million bucks to, to, uh, renovate that facility. Just so that you're aware, over the last three years, we've had annual operating costs at this building of about twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, we just, that's for hydro heat, security and some labor, um, just to try and, and, uh. Keep the building, uh. Um, going so. Uh, and however, we are seeing a, a number of roof shingles blow off, uh, recently, some windstorms in March. We had a number of shingles lying on the lawn. And I know moving forward, unless we address some of this, uh, we're going to have some issues in, inside the building as well. If, if, uh, we're not mindful of this. Um, so making decisions on twenty four Saint Andrews is not easy and I. And I think, uh, you know, Jim made a good point, pardon me, the warden made a good point to earlier about COVID and. And office space needs, but, uh. I think we're also, we need to be mindful of some of our projects and certainly here on, on the, at the courthouse campuses is that. Um, there's some indications and I've been getting some emails in that. The federal government and potentially the provincial government might have sort of a stimulus package for infrastructure. Um, and, and that could come s- soon or when this pandemic kind of eases off a bit. Uh, they're looking to re, to stimulate the economy again, but they are looking for shovel-ready projects. And, you know, so this brings to mind things like the elevator in the courthouse. And potentially this building as well. Um, how, how quickly could we bring these types of things to a shop shovel-ready project? So these are some things I think we should keep in, in mind. Um, on that note, um. I did, uh, re- reached out to Corey there to do some analysis based. If we were to renovate this building and it, it fits about a million dollars to renovate the building. Um, and estimate how much annual operating cost might be. And to look at an amortization period, what would we have to charge per square foot for rent in that facility? Whether we charged our, our own departments, we moved in there and charged our own department's rent. Or if we had a tenant in there, uh, what would we have to charge them for rent to sort of fund that, uh. That renovation and operating costs. And Corey came back to me with a, a number of about thirty-four to thirty-five dollars a square foot. Uh, so then I did ask, uh, Nick to, to reach out to a local, uh, real estate agent just to inquire. What are, uh, what's office space going for in the downtown core? And that, that reply came back at about twenty to twenty-five dollars a square foot for, for office space within the downtown core. And of course, that depends all on the, the amount of square footage available. Um, so, so it kind of gives you an indication that perhaps. If, if we have to fund this ourselves, renovating that facility and renting it out may not be a viable option. Um, however, if there is funding available or grants available to do so, perhaps that. Maybe that is something to consider moving forward. Um, there are, there are a few other things that we need to take into consideration. And certainly one that will be coming forward next week is, uh, the tender for the roof replacement at five Huron. Or that's the building where Service Ontario is out of. Um, I can tell you, we opened up that, uh, those, that tender this week. And it is over budget to the tune of about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. So we did initially estimated in the budget to that work to be, uh, eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, one thing with that building at five Huron Street, when it was constructed back in the late fifties. Uh, it was designed to be able to construct another story above. Um, so that adds a potential for an additional forty-five hundred square feet. Of course, uh, uh, building codes and, and things today are, are much different than back in the fifties. And so we'd, we'd have to reach out and just to ensure the feasibility of, of that type of thing moving forward. One thing with that building is with our tenants in there, we have an annual rent. Of a hundred and five thousand dollars annually. And, uh, we just, back in twenty nineteen, we renewed, pardon me, twenty eighteen, we renewed. The lease agreement at that facility for an additional five years. Uh, with, with Service Ontario and with the victim witness. Um, you should know that, uh, based on that, uh, that, uh, revenue that we generate from the rent there. That hundred and five thousand fully covers the annual operating cost. And the, uh, annual capital, uh, maintenance, uh. Portion that we, that we need that, that facility on an annual basis. So i- in essence, that building basically funds itself, uh. Um, and that rent that we, that we get there, the. Um, what's left after the annual operating cost goes into the facilities reserve. For capital maintenance projects such as this roof replacement. So, so one thing we do know is that, uh. Past studies have indicated that we just do not have enough office space. For the county administration within the courthouse building itself. Um, but as Jim stated, I think we're learning, we're learning now through, through the COVID pandemic that. Yeah, perhaps we can do things differently moving forward and having dedicated office space and, and showing up to an office each and every day. May not be required for certain, for certain jobs. So these are things we can potentially look at. And do we require the amount of square footage that we were previously looking at? So I think these are things that we should consider and, uh, and discuss moving forward. Like, one thing we do in all this, we want to, uh, start moving forward with certain projects like the courthouse elevator. And looking, perhaps getting that to, uh, a shovel-ready project. Uh, one thing with the elevator is in the courthouse is, is there has been a, a feasibility study. Where that could go within the building. And when it comes down to it, there really is only one location that is, is suitable and that's, uh. Over by the front entrance, uh, um, where, where HR offices are right now. Um, and just, uh, right near the big step stairs that you would go up to the, uh, uh, council chambers. So, um, at, at that location, the, the problem within that facility is the large. Superior courtroom. It basically divides the building in half on the third floor. So when you put an elevator in there, it needs to be on the twenty-four Saint Andrews side of the building. In order to adequately ac- access the, the third floor there. And, and just, you know, we, we, we have, uh. Since a lot of these reports were written, we have renewed the lease at five Huron. And also at the courthouse with, uh, the Ministry of the Attorney General. Um, at five Huron, we do have a clause, a termination clause within that contract. And allows both parties with twelve months' notice to get out of that five-year contract. That isn't the case with the, the Ministry of Attorney General and the, and the courthouse facility or one Huron Street. Um, MAG holds the termination option there. The county has no termination option. I guess we have in the past taken a look at certain costs of, of things that we can do on the courthouse property. Um, we've taken a look at, uh, dollars per square foot to do renovations within five Huron Street. I've included some numbers there from, from previous reports into totals that we were looking at in order to renovate that, that facility. Um, uh, as well, we have in the past looked at a parking garage at the back of that property. Um, I guess there's, certainly we have parking issues. Um, I, I think some people in the past have think, have thought that we have a parking problem. Um, I mean, not necessarily of the same opinion. I think on, is it certain days we have, we certainly have parking issues there. And that's certainly compounded by the Service Ontario, um, working out of that five Huron Street. So these are just some things we want to, uh, to, to consider. And in order to do a parking garage at the back of, of that, uh, property is, it's not the easiest thing to do. We have a number of setback issues. And really prices for that, uh, ballparked at about one point four million. So again, a lot of information has been brought forward on this particular topic. Um, what we're trying to do is sort of get you up to speed. Um, certainly, there's a few councillors who have not been around, uh, as long as some of the others and. There is a lot of information that you need, you need to know before you can make some effective decisions moving forward. Uh, so on that note, I think we're, we're committed to working with you in order to ensure that you make good decisions. That, and, and as I say, we're, uh, we're not necessarily subject matter experts, but I think. We can work together and get in, in the right direction here and then go out and get that detail that we, that we need to move these projects forward. So thank you, and I'll take any, yeah, questions or comments.
Let's see Bob Wilhelm's name or hand up first, there you go.
Okay, uh, thanks very much, John, and, and I don't know if it's good or bad. I've been one of the ones that have been around for a while. And, uh, the, this campus issue has gone round and round. And I think part of the reason why it continues to go around is because council doesn't feel that they've gotten all the, their questions answered. And I think what we need to do is, uh. Take a serious look at, first off. Space that we do actually need and we do have available in the courthouse. Uh, secondly, uh, do, and would, uh, the, putting another, uh, story on. The Service Ontario building, look after our needs for twenty-five years. And, uh, then do we need to seriously look at, uh. Giving parking or making parking available for staff in the courthouse, et cetera. Um, and if so, then we need to know what the parking garage, uh, A, what it would cost and B. How many spots would there be there and would it be suitable for what we need? And then I think we need to, uh, look at, uh, of course, uh, twenty-four Saint Andrews. Uh, we have to make hard decision there on whether the building's worth it or not. And if so, how could it be done? Then I think the other thing we need to take a serious look at is the other side. And what would it cost to renovate the courthouse so that we could lease the whole courthouse out? And move our, uh, all our staff to a new facility. And, uh, for Perth County Administrative. And where that would be, uh, we'd certainly have to look at. But I think those are the areas that we have to get all the answers for before we can make any kind of informed decision. Uh, on dollars and cents and, uh, where, uh, Perth County admin should be. Thank you.
Walter, you're next.
There, I think I'm on, um, so very, very, very good, uh, report, John. And I, I agree with, um, um, a lot of the comments that, uh, that Bob has said here. Um, I guess, um. I may be one of only a few, but I would be really opposed to declaring that property surplus. Um, I think, uh, the questionable, um, viability of twenty-four Saint Andrews Street, the building. Is, uh, is, is certainly questionable at the best. Um, but as, as, as Bob has said, there's a number of things that we need to look at. The, the first item that I think we need to look at, and I think needs to be looked at fairly soon, is, uh. Um, the registry office, five Huron Street, uh, built in the fifties. Um, and it was built that it'll take a second story. Um, things have changed in the last fifty years and, and certainly the building code has changed. And I think it's imperative that number one, we need to find out, can you indeed put a second story on that building? Uh, if we can, then that answers a question. If you can't, um, then that. That changes the whole scenario a little bit. So I, I think that's something that we need to have, um, and need to know fairly quickly. Um, uh, to go from there. If we can't put a second story on that, what would we need to do is, is, is look at that property that that archive sits on. Uh, I know John has said we can't tear it down, um, or very unlikely that we could tear it down. But, um, in other municipalities and other areas where they've, they've taken a, a building such as that Heritage Building. Uh, you can keep the front, uh, or outside of it and, and go from there. I think, uh, and I guess where I'm coming here is, is. We know that we need an elevator, uh, we've needed one for quite a while. Um, the opportunity is there, whether we put a second story on, on the, uh, five Huron Street. Or whether it's, if that's not possible, if we enclose the area between the courthouse. And the archives and incorporate, um, a, a front entrance, which would be accessible by an elevator. To all floors in the, in the, in the courthouse, I think could be tied in together. And as John said, if there's some, some, uh, some funding, uh, whether it's federal or provincial, uh, that would certainly be, uh. Be worth looking into and, and would need to, uh, to have. Um, the parking garage, uh, I, I guess I really question the, the, the idea of a parking garage. Cause I don't think we have enough room to even, um, to even consider it. We can put a garage there. But, uh, I don't think you can get it, uh, um, build it capable enough to handle. Um, very many cars, so, um. You know, we can move Service Ontario around, like if we, if we, um, can't build a second little floor on there. Um, probably, or possibly we could, uh, if we did something to the, to the archives and close that area in between the courthouse and the archives. That area and their part of that area could be Service Ontario, uh, parking could then be for them on, off of Saint Andrews Street. But there's a number of things that we have to look at, I think. And, uh, if we are really serious, and I think we are serious about the elevator. Um, we need to look at it really soon and, uh, uh, it would be a shame to put an elevator up. Individually and not tie in to some other, uh, future construction that would maybe happen. I think that's all I'll say at this point in time.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I got a couple of hands up. Uh, further to Walter's comment about the second story, that's true, we do need to know for sure we can. And the reason I brought that up earlier, I said to John, uh, a couple Mondays ago, we're not putting a new roof on that. If you think you're going to put a second story on it. So that's why I kind of brought this ahead a little quicker. Daryl and then Todd. Daryl first.
Hey guys, there, yeah, great, thanks. There Johnny, um, two things I want to take out of here today. Would you do a little bit of, of a, of a statistic? How much traffic we're seeing in there? And how often, i- is there any type of recorder? How often? Is the staff coming in saying, I don't have a parking spot and how many? How, we could put a parking lot up at the top of the Saint Andrews facility and between the courthouse. Let's get the number. How many lots would that give us? How many slots would that give us? We, we need solid data there. And we've got to go from there. And we gotta go from there. Yes, I I strongly agree. We need to embrace this, take it serious and get to work. As a a parking garage too, um starting at one point three or one point five million, I can assure you that's going to be closer to five. It will be able to wheelchair ramp for under two hundred. Or a front door refurbisher anger. It's just the numbers are not quite there, but some some solid data. How often are we getting rough parking spots? How much could it hold up at the top and if that building was gone and with clay, nice little upper parking spot? Or can we put in a handful of parking spots up there for our staff in between the existing buildings? And potentially use a St Andrews building, you know? It was some solid, more solid numbers around that, and I think that would help us start going the right way. But yeah, for sure, I want solid concrete where we're going by the end of March.
Okay, I got Todd. And then I got Doug. All right, but Todd, you're first.
So I have a little bit of political political dogma about this that I'll concede upfront. Um I personally think that uh we should be divesting of the entire campus in the city of Stratford and moving uh the um the head of county governance into the political boundaries of the county. Um I therefore uh believe with regards to uh this particular property that uh we should pursue the declaration of surplus, but I think we have to go more for more further than that. And um and that's at this point, I'm happy enough to entertain and will commend John on providing a good report. Happy enough to entertain um you know additional data. I agree with the previous councillors who on on us to seek more information uh about various options, but I think one of the options that I'd like to see data about is if we built a a purpose-built uh building in Sebringville or Mitchell for the counties, how how hosting? Has become.
He's done. Okay, Doug Ay.
Exactly what Todd said there, we're we're putting a Band-Aid. We're a hospital. We just, John McClellan put out thirteen Band-Aids there. We should we should divest as that's Todd's word. And and think about selling the whole facility and moving to something that's useful for us. It can still be the county courthouse. It can still hold the the courts. It can still hold the Service Ontario. But everything for five years I've been on this is a Band-Aid fix. And I'm not a Band-Aid guy. I cut things off and start new. Now, this is on the public website, and I know my phone will light up and because there's somebody listening who says, I'm not from Perth County. And and we all know that. It was soon as we say that we should we should sell that to some investor and move to something that suits us properly. Todd said uh Sebringville or maybe Mitchell or we we have land. I can see it from my house. Lots of land to build a a new facility in Mitchell at uh John's yard. Um but but everything, like I said, five years, and and I was gonna ask Walter or Bob, how many years before this have we tried to do a Band-Aid solution? And Walter and I know won't agree because I'm all about building new and and more people are about preserving. But I just wanted to say that we can use all the Band-Aids in the world and try and get two parking spots here and three parking spots there and have people in six different buildings. But is that really what Perth County needs, not wants, but needs? To run our business, a thirty-five million dollar business in three or four different buildings with IT at six billion, people working at home? And that's all I'm gonna say because I don't wanna force anything on, but I think we're always looking at Band-Aid solutions at this facility. We got a beautiful new building over here where John works, tons of land to build on it. And I'm not saying that because it's in West Perth. I'm saying because we have the land, we don't have to buy anything. We could sell the facility maybe for four or five million dollars and build the right thing that we need. Thank you.
Other comments? Daryl, you got another one? Gary?
Okay, yeah, I I'm for myself, and again, I'm not a Band-Aid guy either. It is a fine line to say that we can find a buyer for this place. I look at the downtown core in Stratford. There's empty shops everywhere, sitting empty, haven't seen empty. I don't wanna predict the future, but I have an idea where this is going. We look at the White House in Stratford, that was a beautiful facility. The right money would have bought it, weren't invested. We we can jump against some realities through things, building is what it's worth. It's just, mm, I'm not sure. We might see what it's gonna cost and lose.
Matt Duncan?
I'm gonna use your analogy, Jim. I I I think the business case on this. Show me the dollars and cents of building a new facility upside of the city of Stratford and and getting rid of what we have as a campus. Or show me the dollar figures in all these renovations and additions and parking lots solve issues. I I'm gonna have to agree with the guy, like there seems to be a lot of Band-Aid to a to a huge problem here, so I I think it's time to to step away from this whole campus and and look at building somewhere else as well.
Any further comments? Uh I don't see Doug Callum's face anymore. I don't see you's face anymore. Uh I've got a couple of little comments, and I'll make them last here again. Again, we are in changing times. And so what I think I'm hearing here is you want staff be directed to come back with a more elaborate report. Is that the word I wanna use?
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive report as to, and I'm gonna go back to Matt Duncan, the dollars and cents of perhaps an elevator in this building. Uh I'll be honest with you. I think he could take the parking garage and forget about it. You can shove that where the sun will never shine. And I'm pretty sure most of you would agree with that. Uh I'm gonna say before I became an agricultural specialist, i.e. dumb farmer, I worked in the banking industry. I was never guaranteed a parking spot when I showed up at my new branch, and I was in one every eight months. That was up to me to find my own parking. Uh just because, and I'm not trying to throw staff under the bus here, but just because you have a job doesn't mean I'm gonna guarantee you a parking space. Uh that's just a comment I'm gonna make, but I I do believe we need to see the dollars and cents. Because I am a business, like you show me the the business model of this to make this work or whatever you wanna do, and that's what I would make my decision on myself. And I am somewhat, uh people think I wanna just burn things down because I think I used the comment once, throw a match in that building over in St Andrews Street, and that did make the press. But I am a bit of a a heritage guy. I live on a century farm. And going forward with everything that's gone on in the last month and what's gonna go on in the six months, you might be a long, long, long time before you find a buyer for this building because you're gonna try and sell a building that is housing a court system that's not properly accessible. You may end up doing that to sell the building. That's just a thought. So
Comprehensive.
A cop, I'm gonna, we're gonna direct staff to come back with a comprehensive report on all the options that we've sort of discussed here. Does anyone wanna see one thrown out like I do, the parking garage? Does anybody agree that we need to further investigate a parking garage? Walter, you got a comment?
Yeah, I I would agree, Jim. Uh as I said before, I I I don't think we have the 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 space available to put a parking garage in, so I I think you take it off the table. Um your comments about the the elevator, I think are fair. Um we, this has been an issue for, gosh, I don't know how many years. And uh uh we can still own the courthouse and and rent it out to uh to uh court facilities. But there has to be an elevator there, and they've made that perfectly clear. And in this day and age, accessibility is is a big thing. So um I I think um um we need those numbers. And I'm gonna go one step further. Like I I think uh very, very shortly, we need to know number one, if you can put a second story on that uh on that uh Service Ontario building, the registry office. Um because that's going to have a bit of a bearing on where we go as well. So uh if you can't do it, then I say go ahead and fix that roof. But if there's a chance that that's still where you can put a second story or a second story on there, I think we have to have a look at that. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Other comments? Bob Wilhelm?
I'd like to uh see what the uh parking garage would cost because I think that uh without that, it's not gonna cost a whole lot to get some kind of estimate on a parking garage. And I think without that, uh you're leaving one question and answer. And I I think that you should have that for all the time it's gonna take and and it's certainly not gonna cost a lot.
Okay, well, we could get a ballpark figure in a parking garage. I tend to agree with Daryl. I think that number's vastly under numbered. Uh you also remember, you put a parking garage down there, you're talking street lights, accessible ramps, you're talking everything. You're not just talking a garage to drive in and out of. And if you're making a multiple stories, you're gonna put an elevator in that one too. Because it has to be accessible.
Yeah, and it's a dangerous corner.
And it's a dangerous corner out here, the front of the, you you almost have to go to a right turn only. Anyway, we will get them to do that. We will include the prices on the parking garage. Uh you're noting that, John?
Yep, we got it.
Yeah, and Laurie's got it. So I think we pretty well got that covered then.
Just need a resolution.
So I needed, I need, sorry, I need a resolution for staff to come back to a more comprehensive report. Matt Duncan, I see your hand up. You are moving that?
Yeah, I'll move it. Can I also, in the report, can staff please come back and tell us how many square feet do we really need to put everybody under one roof?
Yes.
That was, yeah, thank you, Matt. So one of the comments I made earlier, like we've got desks in this building that I think were here when they started. And you've got desks upstairs where you can take, I'll use where Corey Bridges is. And we've got uh Mr. Menefee and Callan and Laura's up there. If you change the configuration to a smaller set of desks, you could put virtually twice as many people in that section as what you have now. And you could go across the hallway and do the same thing. And I could go into where Lori Wolf's office is, and there's an office that's empty beside. You've got desks and tables in there that are completely ridiculous. Yeah, you have to be more mindful of your working partners you're working in the same room with. But uh I'll take any uh business building in downtown Toronto. There's very square, very little square footage for anybody working. Anyway, so do you wanna move that, Matt? Yes, and uh Todd, you wanna second that? Or you wanna ask a question? I go, I see you going like that. Second? So you second that motion? Okay, we got a second. John, questions? And John, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Um yeah, very good uh point there. Uh within the courthouse there, it's very difficult in a number of areas to do renovations in there just due to the way we have to heat and ventilate and air condition the building uh and certain offices. So you're you're somewhat limited as far as renovations go in there to create more offices or office space. Uh however, I think that's a an excellent comment on, you could probably create a lot more with the some more appropriate furniture within that facility.
And I'm assuming all that will come back in our comprehensive report.
And and just so you are where we did include dollars in uh work in progress and facilities to take a look at all this. Um and what I'm kinda hearing from council here is I think within this, too, we wanna make sure that we take a a a really detailed look at the elevator for in the courthouse, the structural feasibility for a second floor at five Huron. Um and and as well, uh get some better numbers here for a potential parking garage.
Okay. Anybody got any comments before I put that to a vote? Those in favor of that? Oh, Matt, you got a question? Hit your mute button there. Yeah.
Yeah, and and I'd like to, John, to look at the numbers for a new standalone option as well.
And Todd's nodding on that?
Yeah.
Okay. You got that, John?
I do. And and Matt, just so you know, we did do some work on that previously. Um and I I think I did include some numbers in there from from looking at that back in twenty seventeen. But uh um we can, we can certainly investigate that a little further. I think I think that needs to be updated because I think councillor Duncan made a very good point to what exactly do we need for square footage of office space? And um I I think that's changed certainly within the last even two years. Um that that's a very good point, and we'll, we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay. Any further questions before we I bring that to a vote? Any comments? Those in favor of that motion? That is carried. Thank you. Next, John. We have the ambulances.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Interesting. Um last council meeting there, Mac had uh um mentioned that he had uh worked out, negotiated a deal with Crestline uh in combination with some other municipalities that Menavee uh works with there. And uh it, that's all well and good, but we certainly with that dollar value of purchase, we need council's uh approval to to do so and and make the and make sign the agreement. Uh so I've just provided a report here and and just tried to indicate a for council here, we were, we had budgeted for three ambulances in twenty twenty. Um and last year, when we went out to uh for prices, we received a a price from Crestline of a hundred and forty-six dollars and uh for a hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Um it should be noted that so over the last three years, we've only received one bid, and that is from Crestline. Um and and another thing here is 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 late in twenty nineteen, paramedic services, they have decided to implement uh and and it's been approved to put a different stretcher system in these ambulances. And in doing so, um these new stretchers require a power load unit which is in the neighborhood of three hundred or thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh the stretcher itself is twenty thousand dollars. Um one, one thing is that these power load units are best to be installed during the ambulance build. Um and just so council is aware that those power load units were not included in the twenty twenty capital fleet budget. The stretcher portion was included in the paramedic services medical equipment budget. So what we need to do is moving forward is just amend the the fleet budget to include those those power load units. And then as well, that changes the amount of sort of rent, if you will, that we charge uh paramedic services for their fleet. So it kinda broke down uh the Crestline purchase price there. And we can see that the actual ambulance itself, uh the price is is remained this basically the same in in twenty twenty uh of a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. Um and then I've included the pricing for the power load unit and the uh stretcher. Um so that total cost of one unit is now a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, nine hundred and nine hundred and thirty-one. Um in the fleet budget, we had only included five hundred thousand for the replacement of these three ambulances. Uh and paramedic services had included sixty thousand for the three stretchers. Um so the total cost for the three units, including HST, uh would be six hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. That means that purchase is seventy-four thousand over budget, and that's solely because of the power load units not being budgeted for. And that amount uh should be funded from the fleet reserve. If there's any questions regarding uh this report, I'd be happy to. If there's any questions regarding uh this report, I'd be happy to take them now.
Questions? Comments? Not seeing any hands, not seeing any green buttons. I have a recommended action that Perth County Council receives the type-three ambulance purchase report. And that council awards the supply of three type-three ambulances to Crestline Coach Limited in the amount of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred, ninety-four dollars, forty-four cents, plus HST. Do I have a mover? Bob Wilhelm, second by you, McDermott. Any further comment or question? Those in favor? Those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Uh, we're done with you, John? Nothing else? Okay, moving on. Council reports? Anybody have anything to bring up? Bylaws?
For second, third reading.
We need uh to do our, pass a bylaw to do our first, second, and third root reading?
Yeah.
And they're all listed, there's bylaw two, three, thirty-seven fifty with regards to OPA one eighty-three, thirty-seven fifty-one with regards to the property tax establishment, thirty-seven fifty-two for tax ratios, thirty-seven fifty-three to set the tax rate reductions, and thirty-seven fifty-four for, to provide the temporary borrowing of funds in the county of Perth. Do I have a mover? You, McDermott, second by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Notice this emotion? Not seeing up there other business? Any announcements? Not seeing confirmatory bylaw? That's the first, second, and third reading, I haven't got the exact wording in front of me, but uh, you guys, we're gonna do the first, second, third reading and approve. Moved by Rhonda, second by Doug Ait. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, moved by. You, second by uh Todd Kastenberg, those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much, and before y'all just geek off, we have the transportation thing and the planning, and that's gonna start perhaps.
It's scheduled.
Scheduled for one fifteen?
The, the transportation scheduled for one, and landing review is for one fifteen, Meredith thought fifteen minutes for a brief update, and that meeting includes all the heads of council. And you'll have Meredith and.